Good evening and welcome. Right, it should be March 27th, March 27th, 2025. Today will be held in the Site Force Hearing Room. Here at Town Hall. We have a positive agenda, so you're set.
Set.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we have a continued public hearing on a site plan administrative review. It's a request for immediate. So what's happening with this project is that 803 Countryway is what was, you already have. And now they've also submitted 799 Countryway. Alright, it's the same applicant for both projects. Two different owners. There's gonna be a whole bunch of cross easements, et cetera. So we're gonna review the site all as one as one site in terms of utilities. But each individual site still gonna have to comply with all the requirements. And so so that's, we're gonna, we're gonna continue this till April 24th. When when, you know, peer review will be done and, you know, you can see it all as one as one concept. We are ready?
I'm going to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing of major site plan administrative review for multi-family building in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, North Situate Village District, Outer Village Sub-District, BCN, NSB, OV, until April 24th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. And to continue time for action, filing with the Town Hall until May 30th, 2025.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
So our next project is a continued public hearing, so we have to wait till 7. So I guess we'll do all of our old business and business. So I think we do minutes?
We have the minutes of March 13th, 2025.
The second. Because we got a lot to say.
I read everything.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we don't have any comments yet. So here's our community's update, which I'll let send you the day I got, I want that on my headstone, okay? Can we have the MTA communities update, please?
MTA communities update, um, well, you skipped a few things. Um, MTA, we're still wins. They changed the website this week. Now they've approved 55 communities.
Are we 151?
Yes. And they, they put a new map, um, on there showing the communities that are in compliance, those that are under, still under going review, those that are not in compliance. So new map was on there this week.
Are we getting, we had the like compliant stuff, no, doesn't matter, no, it's.
We're, we're still under review.
So 55 communities, how come then?
Well, under.
351.
No, no, 121.
No, I'm just.
120 something, right?
173 MTA communities.
171.
It was either 171 or 173 because I think we ventured into Fall River, we're at it. Because now the train goes there.
Thank you.
So I don't know.
That doesn't make any sense.
No, it doesn't make any sense.
But then it don't make sense at all.
No, I don't, we didn't, that, that, you'll say, ours is not to worry why. Ours is but to do a dime, here we go.
Dr. Lloyd Brigade.
And the six of us, there's no unity in this.
So
Already there.
Maybe next week, well, um, I don't know, we have to check. They seem to update the website every Wednesday or Tuesday night. And so we check every Wednesday. And, you know, we haven't gotten any emails.
I mean, none of the email works because of that was I had, so we know that happens. So there we go to, uh, the community's update was, no, I don't think that is on.
I went and took this black one's meeting the other night, oh, gee, and listened to the Grantham group. 63 units at Gates. Okay, speak up, everybody, 63 units are planned, one bedroom units at Gates. And they showed the plans, the actually the entrance to the building will be in the rear. They're figuring about 100 and some odd parking space, not including the senior center, they will be walking trails. There's, they're going to keep recreation, the tennis courts and so on. The building will have to come down. And of course, there were people that, that were destroying our heritage, but I'm not sure that I can agree with that. But what the presentation showed, the building that will be on First Parish Road to really be attractive and it will be brick and windows and all the rest of it. But the entrance will be in the back. And the issue too with the others, you can back, they will see it. But also to the traffic on First Parish Road is horrific. But, you know, we only grew in population over the last 50 years, 1,000 people.
Yeah, but everybody, all the kids have cars.
All the kids have cars. So every 16-year-old has a car. And they don't drive, they ain't. So here they are, zoom. They have to figure out a way to adequately cross First Parish Road, the senior center, the library, just everything. And then it was a bit of a discussion about a rotary. That's been talked about forever. Also about cut work and whether that should be one way or not. And it was cut work. Something else.
I can read the line, you can.
The line and, and so on. This is just the first salvo of all salvo. It is, I asked the question, it is in fact a friendly 40B, just like the Lawson Green. And Lawson Green, yeah, about 300 people on a waiting list, the Lawson Green. 300 people. And the people that I know that are there love it.
I know.
They absolutely love it. So these apartments will be approximately 700 square feet. One bedroom, because they're concerned if they went and somebody asked about a two-bedroom, they're afraid that even your uncle Billy will move in and you'll never get him out. And you're gonna go on there in a two-bedroom. So these are for seniors, long-term housing, lot.
And it's still just an RFP. There was only one response to the RFP. Nobody's selectmen have not accepted anything yet.
I know, but I'm just telling you what presentation the other night.
Did they discuss the, um, the offices there that are being used by like the red center?
They're remaining.
They stay there and then it's just like a part, like a part.
Yeah. The other, they have to figure out the HVAC, they have to figure out all that other stuff. And then, of course, the food pantry has to find a new home, but they have to do that anyway. The question is, where will they go? Where else? So, um, it was an interesting meeting. There were not that many comments, but if they go forward, they really need to involve groups of people, you know, let the public know, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it. And, you know, it's important. Does it make, make our 10% of affordable units? No. No, does not. So that's all I know about that.
We need approximately 300 more units to make, to make it close to 10%. Right now, we're at 6.06%.
And where would we put all of those three? Well, it could have gone to Bartlett Fields. But that one, so.
Oh, that's still kicking around?
No, isn't really.
Well, around new letter. But, I mean, somebody owns the property, except they're having a problem with the sewer capacity. So, you know, so it's still kicking around, but, you know, it may, it's not feasible at this time.
What's Bartlett Fields?
Yes, you mean.
It's a process of public safety on the 3D.
So it's between me and Forrest, what is that thing called?
Oh, yeah, Merritt Woods.
Merritt Woods.
They, they acquired a few years ago, um, it's, and they got a project eligibility letter from the state. But it's been more than two years, so I believe the project eligibility letter is expired. They wanted to do 268 units. 268 units, there's not the septic capacity on that site to handle 268 units. They've tried, they've been trying to get sewer, but they're not gonna get sewer from North Situate. And no, that wouldn't make any sense at all. And so they, I mean, they, I think they tried Cohasset. So there are still floating ideas about.
Okay, well, we have all the people coming, okay?
I mean, they were already here.
I know they are.
Yes, we are here, we're right here.
I mean, so right now, just, I'm not, I'm just adding a little bit more. We are working on a revision of the housing production plan because it has to be certred, redone every five years. And the housing production plan, um, and the numbers are right now telling us that rental properties are vastly needed in Situate. The number of rental properties has dramatically gone down over the past five years. I mean, you see most of the projects that come before you for multi-family, they wanna do ownership because they don't wanna deal with the rental. And so there's a vast need for rental housing, and this would be 62 plus. But, so, I mean, it, it does kind of fit in with where things are going in terms of what the town needs.
What, is there anything further on 40B on First Parish?
No, nothing's been filed. They, they just got through, um, I think within the past month, they got the wetlands finalized. So the wetlands grew from what was included in the project eligibility application. And they determined where the isolated vegetated wetlands were. But, you know, under a 40B, they lower away the isolated vegetated wetlands. And so those are local wetlands.
Right, and have they started on open bucket yet?
No.
No?
That just got approved for wetland, the wetlands and border health, I think was, I think that was imminent to, border health was imminent to approve. They were tied up a long time with, um, the reserve septic system and, and with that and with border health and what the conservation commission was willing to permit. Those units came off our subsidized housing. Well, we could put them on and then it, then it had been a year between the time they got their, um, approval and they didn't have building permits, so they had to come on.
I'm just gonna go to conservation, but I, they started at 4:30 and I came and switched and they were all gone. So I didn't read the agenda well.
Hey, I'm just gonna go, um, for 1,000, I didn't read the agenda either, I went to the wrong place, so what are you gonna do?
So and that's, anything else happy? Well, most of the days are pretty. And so now we are putting a development report.
Well, hold on, we skipped a couple.
We skipped a couple.
Report to town meeting.
I don't have that, you know.
Hi, yes.
I don't have that same piece of paper, excuse me. Hi, no, this is what I printed last week, but okay, sorry. So we have to have the report to town meeting.
Alright, so I understand that last time you guys talked about it and the changes were made. And so we're asking for signature tonight. So this is here. Um, we, I think we have an original. All the changes that you want were made. Alright, so here is the original.
Because it'd be a laugh, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. I mean, that's the report that you'll be reading at town meeting. Alright, so report to town meeting, while you're signing that, um, I'm just letting you know that we've had a request to eliminate the sedimentation sub at the water treatment plant. And so, um, I've met out there with our consulting engineer, I've seen the site. And, um, there, they've submitted some materials the other day in support of this. Our peer review engineers reviewing it, Steve, I sent the innovation to you as well.
Yes.
That's alright, I mean, we told them it wasn't gonna take, it wasn't gonna be overnight that they were gonna get this. The problem with the site is that water can't get to the sedimentation sub. Um, because it never could to begin with because of the way the site was. They had these, um, trenches that supposedly went down there, but nothing really ever got to the trenches. So right now, they're pumping into the sedimentation sub um, from, from de-watering. Um, and then they have been de-watering some too. De-watering some has water in it. They wanna take away the de-watering some too and use rack tanks. Um, and then they wanna make the sedimentation sub a little bit smaller. They wanna finish the whole backside of the slope of the detention basin up so that they can be done with the downhill part. And so that would mean they would also this spray, plant that and do the wetland replication. We allowed them to temporarily expand the limit of work last December after the blowout, which was not the, not a blowout by Toad Brothers standards. It was just a little bit of a, you know, the stuff went beyond, um, the limit of work. Um, but everything seems to be working well, but, wow. What it incurren for the town and our engineer are reviewing this request. Um, we've allowed them over the past month to work late, um, most Tuesdays this month, um, to do concrete pours. Because once you start a concrete pour, you really can't terminate the concrete pour. Uh, we allowed them last Saturday to work to bring in a crane. Um, you know, we said, don't come before nine o'clock. Um, and, you know, so I didn't hear any complaint about that. So I assumed it went, the crane was brought in successfully. Uh, we have had, we have been having complaints. Um, we had a couple complaints the week before on starting, them starting early. And we told them, absolutely, this is not allowed. And, you know, next time they do it, I'm gonna haul them in.
What was early?
One time it was a little after 6:30, the, um, the truck came to pump out the, um, the toilets. And that's work. And another time it was before seven. They wanted to start early for one of the concrete pours and I said, absolutely not. You can mark late, but you can't start early. And the lights, we've conditioned it when they do work late, that the lights cannot shine for the neighbors, the lights have to shine in, et cetera. Um, but, I mean, so it's, it's progressing.
Yeah, it's got a concrete, you can go by, you can see walls.
Yeah, there, there is concrete.
Lot of people working now.
Yeah.
For sure.
So, I mean, so we're still in the process of reviewing it. I mean, it seems like a reasonable request. But provided they, you know, get all the frac tanks and all that stuff. When, you know, I'll let you know when we have our consulting engineers report. But she just got it this week, so.
When is this supposed to be like ready to go?
I thought.
Be 27?
I thought the end of 26, I thought December 26th, 26.
The town's Christmas present, what are we thinking?
A year from.
A year from.
I mean, that's what I thought was supposedly the, um, the whole idea. And things are, things are working well out there. Um, you know, they do get details when they need the details, um, et cetera, so. Um, so that's, that's just an update on that, we're reviewing it. Um, we remain very, very busy. Um, you know, our next meeting, we'll have the Pier 44 Park. We have 340 Gannett. We have a site plan administrative review, ADU, and we'll have ANR.
What is the ADU, which one, who's that?
Let me make a lot. Okay, so with the new bylaw, yes. So it's, um, it's, it's been, it was a little hairy getting to the point where we're at, I won't kid you. Um, and, um, you know, not, not always very nice either. Um, so, um, but the, there are a number of ADUs that are lined up that are coming. I mean, that we've heard about. There's some that have applied for building permits, but they, obviously they can't get a building permit because they don't have their site plan review. Some people still think they don't need site plan review, but we won't go there on that. Um, we also got in a site plan review today for Split Rock in Situate. That is going to be, um, a temporary use. Um, a temporary building, um, at the old Jamie's in North Situate. Um, so we're gonna have to carefully think about how that's going to be conditioned. Um, because, you know, they can't, they, they don't have this, they need sewer in order to be able to put a building there. The building has to be a mixed-use building because that's what your bylaw tells us it has to be. Um, do you want me to have, send that out for site plan review? I mean, for our peer review?
They do have three tight tanks.
They have four.
Four. And, um, they told the selectmen that they're, they have to put in four, put it to border health, four bathrooms.
There's only three bathrooms.
Three, three bathrooms.
Three bathrooms.
And
Once handicap, um, accessible.
And they, um, the selectmen gave them whatever was necessary, predicated on their receipt, getting all of their permits.
Right.
And they expect to open maybe the end of July or August. That's what they said.
Well, I mean, it's gonna depend on how long it takes to get through the planning board.
Right.
And then they still have to, ADCC won't give them their licenses until they have a study, et cetera. So, um, we'll be hearing that on, um, have to hear it on April 24th.
So do you wanna know if we want to send that out, if we require peer review?
Peer review.
I would think so. We require it for every other projects, why would we want to for this project?
Alright.
So we need to access every other project, it's, it's got sewer or water or all that other stuff, so it has to be looked at.
I mean, they, in the letter, it said, and I know that they were going to have to investigate to make sure the tight tanks were all still tight. Um, the letter says it has, but I, of course, when I circulate this around everybody, that's when the comments will come in and the board of health will have to comment on that. They're also gonna tie into the grease, existing grease trap out there too, um, et cetera. So
It's a lot more paper, don't they, than I thought?
Yeah.
No, but it looks better than it did.
Right, so, I mean, but, you know, it's just gonna have to be carefully thought about because it's a temporary use and now everybody's gonna want to do a temporary use. So we have to make this specific and really condition it.
And it would be seasonal?
Seasonal.
So just like the one Cohasset?
Yes, exactly. Same Cohasset people will be, will be writing this, but, you know, that, you'll have a, you'll have a presentation when that comes in, but I just wanted to, you know.
This should be a better site. You know, this should be a better site than what we had at Fort Nelson.
Yeah.
Rebecca, I want to meet with you, I have to go to another meeting. Down the hall, I'll be right back, is that okay?
Yeah, you can, I mean. Um, so, uh, we, we remain very busy. You know, new projects coming up, we're meeting about, we're running it all the time. And, you know, um, some of these projects that we have in the pipeline, you know, they, they have a lot of loose ends that have to be tied up before you can close your hearings, before I would recommend you close your hearings. So, um, that's where we are with planning and development reports.
654. Anything else?
Did you, um, did you end up going to the site tour? Uh, the, the watering plant?
Yeah, I did, Jenna, Jenna and I went there, yeah.
It was raining that day, unfortunately, I got tired of.
It, it, it was raining, um.
And was it functioning properly?
Yeah, no water is getting down to the sedimentation sub. I mean, water will get to, they had pump water into the de-watering sub. But, um, the site, the site looked, the site looked good. I mean, yes, there's, there's pockets of water where they're pumping water too. But it's just, I mean, they have to prove that they can still handle the nimpest capabilities of that site.
And, and, but, but they're pumping water to the basis, but then are, are those all the recharged or some of them being discharged? Cause they had a discharge that went down.
They had, and waters come out of that discharge that down there one a couple times, but not very often. Not very often. I mean, they just hope to really try to tie up the whole, that downslope part of the site. Um, and, you know, try to really get that stabilized because it will be in the best interest of the project. Um, but, yeah, the, the site looks good. I mean, yes, there was water in, water's being pumped to the sub. And then below the sedimentation sub, they had made another little, little sub and water was in there, but, um, no, no salty water, um, is being discharged off the site. I mean, then I had gone to another site with Jenna before that and, um, you know, there, we were approving bottom of infiltration um, for a common driveway, um, and, um, they were all, the excavations were full of water. But you could easily, I mean, Jenna could see on the top one that soils look good. On the other one, they were a little bit more questionable, but they were putting in both gravel and crushed stone. And there was also an overflow on that one, so that, you know, if anything did happen, um, it's going, you know.
Yeah.
It's going downstream.
Good.
So.
This common driveway is the town twice, is it? Did it?
Oh, you already have it. You already have it.
Elm Street?
Elm Street.
Oh, no. You okay? One minute. Well, you know, by the time everybody gets set up, it'll be 7 o'clock at the point.
Yeah, I mean, you know, why don't we just call it 7 o'clock?
You know, the clock took a bite, so it's 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
So we're going to have a continued public hearing, site plan administrative review and swamp water permit for Avenue Elementary School. Do we hoping?
No.
So why don't they, you guys present first? We can ask questions.
Right, um.
You can introduce yourselves.
Yeah, I'm actually looking for my Zoom window. Am I still logged into the?
You're a co-host. Co-host, yeah.
Oh, here it is, over here. Sorry.
Maybe that's it.
Alright. But I'm sure the screen.
So you all have the stuff that was in your, in your folders. There's been a number of submissions since the last time that they'll, um, go over.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Did you keep going by Charlie, because why is Charlie there on local? Okay, bye.
Hi, so I'm Tom Hengelsberg, project manager with Jordan Woodier. With me, I have
Steve Sarrow, project manager with Vertex, the owner of the rep, Christine Chiu.
Everyone, Donald Walton and Jordan Woodier.
Christine Sheehan, I'm the principal of Allen's School.
Chris McTellum, the assistant director of facilities for schools.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. And online, we also.
And online, we also have our traffic engineers, two of them, two civil engineers, and two of my associates at Jordan Woodier. So, a lot of people listening and watching online as well. Will be available to answer any questions or anything. So, um, we've got a number of sort of disparate issues that we're trying to cover tonight. And it's basically, this presentation is basically broken into traffic first issues, and then, uh, site plan civil issues after that. This is sort of, this is the same agenda we had last time. We went through all of these criteria. The ones that are bolded are the ones that we still have outstanding items that we need to address. So, without any further ado, this, uh, is just the kind of orientation plan with the, uh, the circulation patterns on it. We showed you this last time. It's here, just in case you need to refer to it again. I won't, I, I think everyone's reasonably familiar with the project at this point. We don't need to go over anything yet here. There was a question from DPW, this is almost really starting with the smallest thing first. Question from DPW about, uh, how the snow plowing is going to be done on the grass pave. We submitted a memo, this is just sort of a, a summary of the memo, uh, talking about how, uh, Chris and his crews are going to take care of it. DPW says they don't plow grass pave, which is fine. We basically have two areas, we've got the fire lane down below in the front of the site. My pointer comes on, yeah, there we go. Down in the front of the site here, um, that needs to be kept open all the time, so that'll be plowed whenever there's a snowstorm, just like everything else. Just like all of the sidewalks get plowed by the district. The, so the reparking spaces, however, you know, we feel that it's, you know, really an option for the school to keep those plowed. It really depends on if there's a major, um, event coming up in the school. If they know there's going to be an event in the winter time, when there's snow on the ground, and they know they need those spaces, then they can be plowed at that point. And that'll just, you know, the, the less they get plowed, the less damage is done to the grass. But generally speaking, if you have, uh, plow with skids, you should be okay. So, that's kind of the plan there. And, um, you know, we talked about, you know, Chris and I talked about, um, you know, we have a furniture fixtures equipment budget that happens kind of after and parallel to the, the building budget. The snow, snow, um, maintenance equipment is, is usually part of that, you know, small gas engine, snow blowers, or, uh, you know, small tractors that can plow the sidewalks. So, that's something that we'll look at for this project.
We have one case that we use now, small tractor with a brush and a plow.
Yep.
Alright, so before we move off the grass pave, um, let's just complete a, a little tongue. Last time Jeff Durk, our traffic engineer, said he wasn't in, really in favor of the grass paved spaces. I got an email from him yesterday. He's fine with the use of the grass pave for temporary parking only. And so, he, just temporary parking only, they should never be permanent parking spaces.
And in the normal functioning of this site, that drive, let's see if I can get my arrow back here. This drive is a one-way bus and, you know, primarily buses, but occasionally service vehicles might come back here, you know, garbage, recycling, deliveries, that sort of thing. But it's not going to be open to the public in general use of the school anyway. So, I think that would be addressed.
Yeah, I just, I want to complete the, the grass pave.
Thank you, thank you. So, now moving to traffic, um, last time, the peer reviewer asked that the traffic study scope be, uh, expanded. So, um, niche transportation group looked at, uh, the Hollit Street intersection at one end of Anvonal Road, and then also, kind of cut off on my screen here. The Captain Pierce, Man Hill intersection at the other end at the top of the hill. So, um, those are the two, uh, pieces that were added to the, the scope of the study. This is a, you know, as I'm sure you've seen, if you've looked at the, the study, very detailed. I'm really just kind of trying to summarize the, the conclusions and the high points of, of what they found. Looking at those two intersections first, we're looking at the crash rates. It's really below the district and statewide averages by sixty-seven percent, so very significantly lower than the average crash rate that you would see, um, at intersections. And, um, as a result of that, uh, the conclusion is there was no demonstrated safety deficiencies at these intersections.
May I add something to that? This four-way stop at Man Hill.
Man Hill, yep.
Okay, and I think that has done a wonderful job in terms of people zooming in and out.
Yeah.
At the other end, Anvonal and Hollit Street.
Yep.
Ninety-seven percent of the time, there's no problem. Unfortunately, when someone parks in the house at the corner, and there, whatever it is that they have, they are, basically, the rear end of it is on the sidewalk, so that your site distance is nil.
Really cut down, yeah.
Totally. And I am not sure if that is something that can possibly be addressed. Because you're increasing your traffic, because there's so, you know, more people, or whatever, to just try to make sure that they don't park on the sidewalk. They're going to be in Austria. Yeah, we'll ask them.
Yeah.
We know, yes, we do, yeah. He feeds the tuppies, they're everywhere. Yes. Well, Austria, we, we dog them, yes, but it's an issue, yeah.
So, uh, then the next slide, again, a lot of data on here, but, um, and we actually went through this with the school building committee a couple months ago, and I'll, I'll say the same thing to you, I said to them. Just really concentrate on, the two important statistics are the level of service, which is the one that's boxed out in red. That's sort of like a letter grade that tells you how well those intersections are functioning. Um, and then right next to that, another thing that's important to a lot of people is the time delay going through the intersection. So, the top table shows you the existing condition. So, uh, all of those turning movements at those two intersections are A grade, except for one, which is a B grade. So, they're all functioning at a very high level right now. Modeling the added, uh, traffic, um, trips for the, as a result of the school project, they're all still maintaining the same grade that they were. The time delays, if you look, it's, I know it's hard to kind of look at one, look at the other. The time delays are a little bit more, but we're talking, you know, three seconds, four seconds, two seconds here. So, the, the big takeaway is that the level of service of those intersections is not really being significantly affected at all by the project. And it's, it's interesting, you know, we didn't look at these intersections initially in a, um, uh, an analytical way, but the consultants did, did look at them kind of, um, holistically, and they said, yeah, you know, with their experience, knowing the numbers that we're talking about for increased car trips and so forth, they advised us that the needle wasn't really going to be moved, so to speak, on those intersections. So, it's good, we've got the data now, they did the, the counts. It's demonstrated, it's all out there, so. Great job. Any questions on that?
Is that because it's R in the school there?
So, the, the best way I can describe this, you know, Brian Samoka from, from Niche is on the line, and maybe he can just kick me under the table, virtually if I misspeak here, but the best analogy I can find is one that we encounter in architecture. Egress capacity of a door. A thirty-six inch wide door will handle almost two hundred people, you know, before you need another door, something like that, just plus or minus. So, an intersection is kind of the same way. So, these intersections were already functioning at an A, sometimes B level, so they had a lot of extra capacity, right? So, the school is adding, sure, it's adding more trips, but this, those trips are still getting soaked up by that capacity that those intersections have. Makes sense? This next slide is really just for information. These little diagrams, I apologize, they're a little hard to read, but basically, those are the numbers of cars that go through that intersection and, you know, turn left, turn right, go straight, whatever, um, at the peak hour. So, this is, I think, the eight to nine. It is the peak hour, I forget which one, I think it's the eight to nine hour in the morning. So, it's, it's, again, it's just for information and just to kind of give you a flavor of the comprehensiveness of the report in terms of what they looked at and the data that they, uh, recorded. But I think one thing I will say is, um, you know, at the peak hour, you know, we're only talking, uh, you know, hundred eighty-five cars, hundred seventy-one cars, forty-five, one thirty-one. So, there's still relatively no low numbers, you know, that number of cars going through an intersection in an hour, so. So, it's good. This next, um, slide addresses the concern about, that was expressed in the, in the peer review letter, about looking at the site triangle distance. Uh, I don't know if you folks are familiar with looking at diagrams like this, it's actually the first time, I'd seen one quite like this. I put some color on here to make it a little easier to read. So, the green, as you're coming out of the school, the green is the right turn, the blue is the left turn. And, uh, basically, what it's showing is that we have more than adequate site distance in both directions at that decision point where a car, it's actually not at the stop line, it's actually inching up a little bit, it's the distance that they, that they put on there, because that's, you know, practically speaking, that's what people often do, especially when they're going to turn left. So, we've got plenty of site distance, site triangles are achieved. So, that was a drawing that was submitted with the supplementary. Any questions there? Alright, the next one, now we get into, again, sorry that it's hard to read on screen, but this next one is, uh, talking about truck turning movement, uh, analysis around the site. So, what we submitted previously was WB fifty, wide body fifty, which is basically like a short haul tractor trailer. That's the kind of deliveries that Chris gets at the site most often. And so, that's what we based our initial, uh, analysis on. The peer reviewer came back and said, hey, you know, that, uh, sized truck is not really used anymore. Standard is really now this WB sixty-two. So, we ran that size, even though it's a larger sized truck than what we would normally see at this site. And it still, uh, moves through the site adequately. There is one pinch point, it's actually hidden behind that, uh, screen there, it's basically in the, uh, northeast corner where the back wheel goes over the curb a little bit. Other than that, uh, they were able to make the, uh, that truck drive through the site, um, perfectly well. It's, you know, there are places where it, um, goes over the, you know, the opposite lane and so forth. If you were ever to get a delivery like this at the site, it would be early in the morning anyway. So, or even in the summertime, you might get like one big shipment of supply or something like that. Yeah, you know, like at the beginning of the, of the school year, so that would happen probably in August, but there's no one on that. So, bottom line, the, the site plan will work with this larger truck, even though it's not something we normally see at the site.
Can I ask, knowing it's for review, uh, what, what is the school bus, are they a fifty or sixty-two, what they are, or does that matter?
We, we ran the school bus also, I don't have that slide here, I have like a little inset of one area where the peer reviewer made a comment. But the school bus made it through just fine also. And the school bus turned, um, though actually, yeah, it just goes around the outside of the site, because that was the primary.
By a ton.
The fire truck goes through, I do have a slide for that, it could be the next, yes. Um, so, one of the things that the peer reviewer asked us to do was look at the overhang from the fire engine, because it is such a, you know, kind of a long vehicle with a relatively short, uh, wheelbase. So, the red lines are the truck, the tires, the black lines, you can just barely see here, sorry to people that are watching online, the black tires are the overhang, or black, sorry, black lines are the overhang. So, that's kind of how it comes around. And they're basically just asking us to make sure that it doesn't hit any signage or other, you know, protruding protrusions, landscape materials, and it doesn't. We did look at these, these three kind of areas here, you know, the, where it first makes the turn, goes around, where it comes around and would come, basically come to rest in front of the school if they're fighting a fire from the front. Doesn't hit anything there, and then the third one being kind of the exiting movement, where the back end does come over the curb a little bit, but it doesn't hit the retaining wall. And that box that's there is actually a site line, so that's way up in the air. So, we're good there.
So, can I just ask one question?
Yes.
So, this is in response to the peer review letter, which I sent you the other day from Vanessa. You're going to be submitting all this stuff in response to the peer review letter, correct?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
And Karen, do you, would you, would it be alright if I gave you a printout of this presentation? Or would you like this in drawing form?
No, we want it in drawing.
In drawing form, okay.
I mean, what he's asked for to be on the plans needs to be on the plans.
Yes, well, th- this turning movement is on the plans that we already submitted. He was just asking us to look more closely at these areas.
Yeah.
So, you do already have this, you have all of these. Okay, so then, la- I don't know if it's lastly, but, um, we also, uh, we talked about this last time, actually, here in the, in the room, uh, extending the taper of the, uh, the right turn lane. Gesturing while we're here. This was originally a much sharper taper, so we actually made this to be a much more gentle transition between the two-lane road and the three-lane road here. So, that's now eighty-five feet, um, which the peer reviewer accepted, they said they were fine with that. They were originally asking for a hundred, but a hundred's like way out here somewhere. So, we're basically blending it with the curve. The other thing that they asked for was to move the crosswalk. The crosswalk was originally more or less like right here, um, kind of next to where the, uh, fire lane was. They said, let's move that to the apex of the curve, so that it can be seen from both directions, which I think was a great, uh, great comment. So, we did that. So, there is a little increase in the, um, impervious area of the site with a little bit more sidewalk here. And then also with the taper, there's a little bit more impervious there. We did also have to put in a very small, very short retaining wall here, it's like literally about two feet high, just to resolve the grade at that corner. So, uh, those were the, uh, the issues that, that this drawing was addressing. Oh, and the other one, very minor, but, uh, important, um, changing the type of pavement markings for the, uh, crosswalks that was done as well.
So, before we leave this topic, um, so, last time you voiced that you were okay with a waiver for thirty-six pending the study to see the taper. Is everybody okay with the waiver now for thirty-six foot wide driveway?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay.
Great, thank you. And then this last slide, again, taken a little bit out of context. This is the bus turning movement, but the comment last time was, uh, this, uh, concrete service apron at the back of the school was actually a rectangle, and they said, hey, couldn't this just be transitioned a little bit better and make the transition for the, the bus more smooth? And so, that's, that's what we did there. And, uh, again, we do, you do already have the full site plan for this whole turn movement for the bus as well. So, and I think that just made some sense as well, just in terms of, uh, not having a corner hanging out there that's more smooth for the snowplow to get through and fall off. That, um, moving on now to, uh, signage and pavement markings. The comment was really, um, it was addressing making the, uh, one-way nature of some of these driveways a little bit more clear. And the comment was to add more signage, just totally not really related to this project. I was with the chief of police last week, and I don't know if he was reviewing the project, or if it was just a random thought, maybe he just mentioned to me, you know, or if it was just a random thought, maybe he just mentioned to me, you know, I, I really don't want this project to be just like a sea of signs everywhere. I would rather have fewer, more effective signage. So, um, knowing that that's his desire here, instead of putting these kind of one-way signs everywhere, what we elected to do was proposing adding, just adding more pavement markings to the, to the road. And we already have one-way signs at the entrance and, uh, do not enter signs at the exit of all of these, you know, this loop here and then the free K and visitor loop here. So we're feeling like with those changes, um, adding this arrow here, these two-way turning arrows were originally right here in the mouth. So we're sliding those a little bit this way, adding a stop sign and a stop bar per their request. Because someone could conceivably exit their parking space and wanna go this way. So when they're at this intersection, you wanna direct them to always go, you know, to the left. So we think that with those additions, we will, uh, have addressed that comment. Any questions?
So, so you're gonna, you're gonna mark the pavement itself?
That's right, yeah.
Right, okay.
Paint.
Okay, yeah. So you'll just have to maintain that as, as the years go on?
Yes. And signage is something where if there is a problem, you can always add a sign.
What we know is too much signage.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And it gets a little cool because you don't know where you are.
Yeah.
It took them four years to put a do not enter sign in the library. Four years. They used to have a, um, soft horse, don't enter.
Oh.
I mean, it was ridiculous.
Yeah.
So hopefully, hopefully this will work.
That's funny, I was just there at the library this afternoon and I was noticing all the signs there. I was thinking about that thing. But yeah, some people just need some guidance. So.
Well, no, I'm not, does anybody have any, I see you're moving off of traffic, I'm not ready to move off.
No, not yet.
Okay.
So we're expecting a response to the peer review, a written response to the peer review comments. Does anybody else have any questions on track?
The only thing I can tell you is, uh, we took a site visit today. And, um.
A site visit to, to the other, yeah.
And so as we were coming from the hallway start, coming down toward the school, um, I don't know who's in charge of trimming those trees, but it's hard to see that flashing sign. It's already existing there.
About the school one.
Yeah. Yes, the school warning sign in this speedway bit flashing there, but that flashing has getting a little old, I don't know who's in charge of that.
It's the DPW that I can talk to.
Well, and I was talking to DPW after our site visit today. These, the, those, um, traffic signals need to be replaced. Those, those school warning things need to be replaced.
Okay.
They're ancient, they have never been replaced. And we're, we're gonna condition that those, the two of them be replaced and you have appropriate warning signs, um, for, for, for where you need them. I mean, we did see that there's a nice lime green one coming down the hill that telling, you know, bittersweet that, um, drive that you're approaching a school area. But whatever needs to be done with those signs also should be done for, for here too. On both sides.
Yep.
Boy, because I know, I'm real concerned that that's such a sharp turn. And if you're here, you know this is school area, and so hopefully it was still gone, hopefully get people there. But that's really like a blind curve.
You're talking about coming down the hills, man hill? Yeah.
And that's quite a, quite, quite a, quite a turn, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so are you gonna talk, do you have a section that talks about construction?
Yes.
Okay, you know, wait for me to have a comment to get to that.
Yep. Okay, any other questions on track? Alright. Moving on, um, the planting plan, we're just showing this to show you that obviously landscape is following the civil, they've got the same changes on the site plan, you know, down here for the, uh, my arrow doesn't seem to wanna stay. Down here for, um, the entrance to the school. One thing I noticed when I was reviewing this plan right before, you know, when we were putting this together, was there's three trees shown in the site plan, and they're actually interfering with the drainage under the, uh, the the stormwater pond there, um, or stormwater basin, I should say. So we are gonna move those trees so that they're out of the bottom of the basin. They're actually gonna be slightly up on the slope a little bit, just so they're not interfering with that, um, underground drainage lines over there.
Just make sure they're not in the site triangle, is that?
Make sure they're not, oh, not in, yes, actually, they're shown on that site triangle drawing, so they're out of the site. Yeah, yep, no, that was, that, we talked about that in our, in our weekly meeting. And then the other piece, you know, I remember I was talking before about we, we had to add a little bit of impervious here. So to kind of make our stormwater numbers balanced, we actually took away a little bit of impervious. So, um, we made, it seems to get muddled. Yeah, here we go. We made, uh, the sidewalk here a little shorter. No one's really gonna be coming that far down when they're dropping their kids off, you know, we are gonna, uh, I'm sure the school will have somebody here to kind of manage, you know, cars picking up and dropping off kids. So, um, it seemed like having more sidewalk down there really didn't help anything. So we took a little sidewalk away there. We also, and we had been talking about doing this for a while anyway, we also made a little planting bed around the American flag. So there's a flag there, kind of in the middle of this plaza, and now it's surrounded a little bit by some, uh, low, very low maintenance greenery. And then there's also a little bit of greenery in front of the, uh, library building, the library part of the building itself. And that's there for many reasons, but it also, uh, does eliminate a little bit more, uh, impervious there. So those are really the only, um, substantial changes to the site plan.
Right, and you guys still agreed to waiver for the, you know, keeping, keep the North Bay Naples, you know, as I said. So I think blending is, we might be remiss if we sort of arrested.
Well said, well said. Great.
So I should get there all that we are sticking.
Right.
All that we can, yeah.
I know, it's not.
All that we can. So this is kind of a question, it isn't really written in the comment letter specifically as like a request or something. But in one part of the letter, it's actually on page twelve of the three twenty-five memo, there's a, a hint that there weren't trees, uh, adequately placed in the parking lot for the zoning bylaw. And so the landscape architect, um, actually kind of has, there's two different configurations here. Basically, they're, they're showing us what it would look like with trees there. And, and we're asking that we not do this because this sidewalk peninsula here, if you wanna call it that, is really going to be one of the, probably one of the busiest parts of the sidewalk system in the, the site plan. Now, that's where kids get dropped off and picked up on the loop, um, on the one side, on the drop-off loop side here. And then on the other side, you have the three K cars, you know, head-in parking. And then the moms and dads are gonna get their kids out and walk them into the school. So having trees, you know, really literally blocking the way on that section of sidewalk, we feel would be a hardship, so, um, it wasn't really phrased as a request or a thou shalt, but we're just gonna clear that up.
You don't wanna do any of those trees?
We, we would really prefer not to do any of those trees.
I mean, I'm counting one, two, three, four, five trees, can you do the one at the end?
Well, we did, there's, there's already one in the site plan here, I guess they were moving it to, to line up with the other ones. So we certainly would do this one here, um, in the island. This part of the island right here is designated as snow storage. So we don't, we wanna have at least someplace where you can put all the snow.
Is there someplace else on site you need to put them?
Just add more trees somewhere else on site?
Yeah.
Sure we can find a place along the edge, yeah. They're not currently in the plan. They're not currently shown in the plan, so we're adding more trees into the, yeah, it's not.
Alright, well, I mean, our, our consulting engineer is off the line, I mean, we can have her speak to this if, if you would prefer.
Sure, I just wanna clear it up.
Janet?
Sure, this is Janet Bernardo, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, we were reviewing the regulations and noting that this specific section says that the parking area shall have trees at this designated area. And we were kind of pointing out the fact that they have all trees in all of them except for this one, which happens to be where the drop-off is, so there'll be a lot of kids walking down this pathway. So kind of understood why there weren't any trees there, but we were pointing out that it didn't totally match your requirement. So I don't know if that means that they should be asking for a waiver or if you would prefer to actually see the trees there. We, we're just kind of noting it, we, we were not feeling strongly that trees were needed.
Does the board wanna grant a waiver or do you wanna see them try to locate them somewhere else on the site?
Can we do what we've done before, which is ask for X amount of trees in your place that we need to see appropriate?
A little harder on this, a little harder on this job. But we could ask for them to keep the five trees in and then we can feel locate them in the end.
That, that, I think that's.
That works.
Well, it's actually four trees, there, so there's, the heavy red circles are one scheme.
Okay.
And the light red circles are a different scheme of the same four trees.
Alright, so four trees.
Can I ask a question, is that so, is that island an island where cars would be pulling up and children would be getting out?
Yes.
And I would have to say there should not be trees on that island because the cars line up usually, like car, car, car. And then if it's preschool, they probably have staff out there opening the doors, getting the kids out, and then you're gonna eliminate essentially spots for cars to pull up.
Yeah.
Right, it's designed so that we don't have heat islands. And that, that's what trees are put in parking lots for.
Yeah.
And so, um, you know, we can, we'll save four trees by the front entry that are required by zoning to be relocated on the site.
Um, if I could just see if I'm right about this, the, the tree to the far right, that was relocating a tree that's already on the.
That's right.
Already in the, it's really adding three trees.
Yeah, it's really adding three trees, this one was already there. That's in the plan that you have before you, it's this tree here.
Right.
And how long the walkway is that?
Oh, gosh, um, it's certainly more than a hundred feet, probably only two hundred feet. You can count the walkway spaces. Yeah.
Could I put Mr. Shen on the spot as the principal of the current, the current Halloway School? Any thoughts, like, makes sense to not have the trees there, like what's, you're out there every day?
I would think, I would rather not have the trees out there. We want to have children have room. They don't always walk a straight line, sometimes they're two and three together. We wanna have the sight lines to see them for people outside the building because that is just a, on the upper part, that's a drop-off for K through five. And those students are not walked into the building. We're outside, we wanna see them, so I would prefer that the trees are not there.
Okay, anything else, Janet? No, we'll just condition that they be relocated on site.
Okay. So three trees.
Right.
Right? There you go. Okay, so now we're getting into stormwater. This next series of slides we showed you last time, I brought them back just in case people wanted a refresher. I'll go through these rather quickly. This first slide just shows the, um, basically the different water sheds and the different, um, design points on the site. You know, basically where the water is going. And you have the four design points, the, the two wetlands and corners, the street, and then a very small, very minor design point in the northeast corner, which is basically a, a pre-existing drainage, a pre-existing, um, topography that we're really not changing in that little corner of the site. It's one of the areas that's just not touched. So that's that. The next slide, again, uh, shows the different kinds of, uh, stormwater structures that we have on the site. We've got, uh, subsurface non-infiltrating systems, are this kind of pink, uh, color here. There's a large one under the field, there's another large one under, uh, the three K, uh, parking area. And then there's a smallish one, uh, right down in the mouth of the drive here. And then we have infiltrating, uh, structures under the school, uh, right here. This corresponds basically to the floor end of the gym. And then we have one out in the, uh, larger south courtyard. And then we have a smaller one, uh, at the southern end of the school exterior. And then we have an infiltrating, uh, stormwater basin here. It's actually kind of divided in two with a, uh, box culvert connecting the two pieces. And then over on the eastern edge, we have the gravel wetland, which is also, uh, non-infiltrating, but, uh, you know, taking in water, slowing it down. So. Going forward, um, this next slide shows the reason why we had to put, uh, the infiltrating systems under the building. The site is basically divided roughly, sort of half and half, two-thirds, one-third, whatever you wanna call it, between cut on the east side and fill on the west side. There's actually a lot of fill under the building itself because the building floor level has to be raised up to, to meet grade on the high side here, basically the, the drop-off side of the building. So there's gonna be, you know, as much as thirteen, fourteen feet of fill in some places under the building here. So we have all of this volume. It's also a great place to be above the seasonal high, uh, water table. So that's the reason, one of the many reasons why we have the infiltrating, uh, structures under the building.
So can I just, so that building is gonna start thirteen, fourteen feet up from where?
From, from existing grade, from existing, so, so where the surface of Flannery Field is now, the finished floor, it's really up, the, uh, we were looking at this on-site a few, uh, months ago, it's really up to about where the dumpsters are right now in the, on the side back of the school. That's kind of the finished floor line. It's a little bit lower than the existing school, um, and quite a bit above the field. Right? And then one of the things that we're doing landscape-wise to mitigate that kind of tall volume from the street is we've got this, um, here, we've got this landscape feature here, um, which is, it's, it functionally, it's getting another entrance into the building. It's allowing that to be an, uh, fully accessible entrance, but it's also kind of creating a terrace visually, so it breaks down the, the scale of that height, of that elevation of the building. So, and then again, because that's kind of a built-up element with a retaining wall in front of it, there's volume there, let's put, uh, an infiltration structure there. So then this next, uh, view here, this was a, uh, I'm gonna go backward. It's, it's the section, you know, the section cut that you see when you look through the building, kind of split it open, look at the side, uh, on the side. And it's kind of broken because it's a long skinny section, it's broken into two pieces. This is the north courtyard, uh, which is showing diagrammatically where the water, the only water that's going into these, uh, structures that are under the building is gonna. the only water that's going into these, uh, structures that are under the building is gonna be coming off the roof. So it's gonna be very, you know, relatively clean stormwater when you compare it to stuff that would be out in the parking lot or something like that. So, um, you know, we did go through this last time, you have the one structure under the gym, then you have the other structure up in the courtyard. And then the third one, uh, to the south end of the building. These are, uh, put in elevation to be two feet above the estimated seasonal high groundwater. Uh, one of the requests was to get more test pits out there. We, the applicant, were asking that that be, that, uh, additional test pit digging be deferred until we're ready to start, uh, the project because basically just don't wanna dig up the sport field, we wanna have the use of that sport field.
So. I mean, I don't have a problem conditioning that, but, but when during, I mean, all you're saying is prior to construction, when prior to construction? I mean, are you talking at the beginning of construction?
I think that's what we have in mind, Steve or, um, Brian, do you wanna address that one?
Sure, hi, Steven Ventresco with Niche Engineering, um, I think we would like to do, you know, as soon as possible, so, um, I think construction would start, uh, you know, later this year. Um, but if we could do it, you know, depending on what the town needs the fields for, if, you know, could be April vacation or, um, you know, towards the end of school, that's, I believe, the timeframe that we would look to, to do these extra test pits.
So I would condition them prior to the pre-construction conference.
Sure.
Yep, how disruptive are the cuts? Like, how, how long is that?
They're about, they're about, yeah, it's about four feet by four feet, yeah.
And how long do you need to have it put back for?
Just for the day, but then, once you fill it back in, you know, it's just kind of rough and there's no grass. And the tracks.
Yeah, I mean, all I would say is, it's, we've got soccer, baseball, lacrosse. We use Flannery Field, you probably know best, uh, what the schedule is, but there's probably not a good time to do it, I guess, at five point.
Yeah.
Unless you're gonna do it over the summer.
Yeah, well, I mean, that might be very well, when it happens, yeah.
I'll condition it prior to the pre-construction conference.
Okay.
Because by that point, nobody's gonna be using the field anymore, right?
That's, that's probably true, yeah.
Right, so, that's what we, that's what we'll finish.
Yes.
I have a question, so, excuse me, um, going back to, back it up a little bit.
Sure, one more?
One more, we were talking about the fill, okay?
Yes.
And I'm familiar with Flannery Field and it's really low.
Yeah.
And it's even with the butters on courtesy states.
Yeah.
So you're gonna build all of that up, how are you planning to grade it? So that it sort of levels off to what exists?
Right, so the, most of the fill that I'm talking about is actually within the building footprint. When you get over to this side here, the backside, we're actually four feet lower than the finished floor elevation because we have a loading dock there. So the grade is down a little bit lower already. And then we have the gravel wetland, which is, it's more or less level, if you, if you cut a section through there, it's more or less level across that section, so. I always get in trouble for speaking loosely, really what I'm talking about, when I'm talking about the large amount of fill is within the building footprint. Over here, we're really talking about one or two or three feet. And it's really just creating the berms that are going to contain this gravel wetland. So you can see, you know, here are the contour lines here, so all of this is built up from what is there existing right now. So, there's actually gonna be, you know, these folks are gonna have a little bit of a burn, um, on what they're looking at. What's not shown on here is all of the planting that we're doing between the edge of the gravel wetland and the property line on our side to create that landscape buffer in that street.
They're gonna see the building line, like, is, they'd see the building.
Yep, and then see the building.
Nine feet of wall before you get to the finished floor.
No, on, on this side, the, the grade is built up gradually from the, the edge of the gravel wetland. It goes up a couple feet here, so, again, on the backside here, we're really just looking at four feet. Basically, the difference between the finished floor and the pavement, which is the height that we have to have the, um, uh, what do you call it, the, uh, loading dock.
So you're going from what is thirteen feet up, dropping four feet.
Yep.
That's where the road is.
Yep.
And then from the road to the wetlands, it drops another seven feet.
Maybe a foot and a, no, maybe another foot and a half. And then it goes up and then down and then up and then down.
So, how steep is the slope, um, on the other side of the gravel wetland, is it like a three to one slope?
If you'll excuse me, I do actually have this stuff.
I thought you, the fill was from existing grade up, and you said that was thirteen feet.
It's hard to see because I don't have a blow-up, but this is the site section, cut through the back of the site, right there. So, this is the finished floor elevation here. So, you're dropping down four, perhaps five feet, and then it, it goes down a little bit more. And then you have the berms for the gravel wetland. And then the berm that goes off gradually until you get to the property line, which is this red line here. That make sense?
Uh, where's the thirteen feet you talked about of fill?
It's right here, it's inside the building, and it's based on where existing grade is now.
And it's, and it's thirteen. And you said it was thirteen feet to get to finished floor.
Right, that's really right at the very front of the building, this section here is cut through the middle of the building. So, it's kind of sloping away.
So, it's, it's sloping like this.
Yeah, yep.
So, it's just a couple of feet there.
Right where we're talking right now, right here? The, the fill inside the building is probably five or six feet, right where we're cutting right here. So it's, it's, the outside grade right here is built up probably two or three feet from where the field is right now. And I'm estimating.
So somebody's looking at that longitudinally, basically.
Yep.
When they're up near the front of the building, you're gonna see much more wall?
What they're going to see. So, this is an older rendering, but it shows the basic idea of what we're doing in the front. So this is that landscape structure that I was talking about with the retaining wall. So, that's all stone, it's not gonna be bare concrete, it's gonna be faced with stone, so it's gonna look this. Um, and it's going to be color selected to be harmonious with the color of the brick. The, probably the highest point where the foundation is exposed is probably right at that corner there. And again, this is an older rendering, it doesn't really show quite accurately what, what the grading is doing now. You know, we didn't really model the grading exactly on this rendering. But it gives you a general idea of what we're talking about.
So that's where you're gonna get your eight or ten feet of wall?
Yeah, it's really, it's, it's, you know, this corner here and this corner here are probably where the deepest, um, or the highest amount of, of fill is, it's at that kind of lowest point. But I mean, this is, this is a good example here where the finished floor elevation is probably right about there. So, all of this stuff is brick veneered over the foundation wall. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so, just trying to get a sense of, you, you can't really tell because we really need around the corner with the school buses to be what it looks like.
Yeah, I don't think I have an elevation in here. But yeah, I mean, we're, just generally speaking, one of the things that we do is we, we do try to bring the grade up to the building to minimize that apparent height as much as possible.
And you want to put in ramps? Accessibility?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's one of the things that's shown in the update to this landscape structure is the, what's behind this wall is actually a long gradual walkway, it's not even steep enough to be a ramp. It's a long gradual walkway that gets you up basically to this point here. And instead of this stair, we now have a ramp going up to the, to the entrance from there. Yeah, so again, that's been redesigned since this rendering is done.
Is your picture of the new rendering, any questions we can look at online?
The, the updated rendering? Um, it's not quite finished yet, they're still working on getting the windows exactly placed, and then we're gonna do another, another round.
Speaking of windows.
Yeah.
So, will these windows open or are they permanently closed?
They'll open, there are sections that open in each room.
Is it air-conditioned below?
It is, uh, it has a, uh, what's called displacement ventilation, so it's the same as, as gates, um, same kind of system as gates. So what it does is it takes the humidity out of the air without chilling the air.
Gates is very comfortable, there's, it's a quiet, it's, even on the hot stuffs.
Okay, so, um, last time there were some questions about how the structures that are underneath the school are going to be built. Um, so what we did was we actually added some color to, you know, this is a detail that comes straight out of the, uh, Civil Engineer's Set. And, um, what you've got here are these cells that are placed on top of the compacted, um, crushed stone at the, at the bottom here. Um, those are placed in there, and then there's, they're placed on top of a filter fabric that separates them from, you know, the rest of the structural, uh, uh, fill. And then, this magenta line actually is a forty mil impermeable liner that goes around the top and the sides of the, uh, structures. If for some reason water did back up or you had a lot of water in the, uh, in the soils and started rising up, there is actually, um, a set of panel drains on the top. So there's three-inch sand or peystone, so it's kind of like a little drainage plane on the top of the, of the structures. And the panel drains actually drain off into, you know, the, uh, the, the site storm system as well. If for some reason, these were not being maintained, and we'll get to maintenance in a second, if these were some, for some reason not being maintained and they didn't work, there is also an emergency overflow which is set at the top elevation of each of the groups of, um, of, uh, structures. So that the water can actually still get out of those, it doesn't just keep rising, in other words, going into the school. It, it has a, an emergency, um, basically a, uh, escape to get out.
Well, if it's below your panel drain, we're gonna be called, there, that's the panel drain, you're getting one.
The panel drain is really just a belt and suspenders kind of thing, it's just, it's just in case the water on the outside of the structure somehow rises up.
Uh, oh, because you, is that why you have the impermeable membrane there? How, how's the water get to it then?
It's, it's, like I say, it's basically just to, it's belt and suspenders, you know, the, the, the belt is basically the, um, the emergency drain going out the side. And if that for some reason were to fail and you might have water still seeping up, there is another way for it to get out on the top of the structures.
Well, but not, not from around the sides?
Not from around the sides.
Inside the chamber. That would have to be a pretty serious blockage for the emergency overflow.
Yeah, so, the, the next slide kind of shows in a little more clarity what's happening in plan, so, um, let's see if I can get my arrow here.
Yeah, Tom, if I, if I could just add, the, those panel drains will be connected, you know, like with a header panel drain essentially, and those will be connected to the emergency overflow, so in the off chance that something does get there, the water has, has a place to go from those panel drains.
Okay.
I didn't follow that, what you said?
Um, so what you're saying is the, the panel drains are actually connected to the emergency overflow. So, they're, they're both going to the same place.
Oh, so if the overflow isn't working, it gets to the panel drain?
That's right, that's.
It's not getting anywhere. It's not emergency overflow, right?
Well, if.
If that's what causes the leak, it's gonna, but that doesn't seem like that works.
So. Okay, what we're talking about is the, if the, if the cells are full and water is draining out, I'm gonna get to that in a second here, so, if the cells are full and water is draining out, it's going to go to a structure here that's in the middle of the lawn, and there's another structure here that's in the middle of the lawn.
Really, you're seeing that?
That's the emergency overflow, it's the exact same concept as, you know, a roof overflow. So you'll be able to see it coming out of the building, so, talking to Chris about this, we'll know. So, um, at that point, the water would be directed into the landscape and then would just be handled by the, the site stormwater systems in a street, in, or in the, in the drive in both cases. And the red path would go to the street, the blue path would go to the infiltration base here, and then eventually to the wetland. So, it's important to point that even with the emergency overflows, the design is such that water's not going up to the neighbor's yard or anything like that, it's all still working within the system as it's, uh, concerned.
That, that's a verb, it's, that, that's not developing to be ongoing, functioning in a system like that.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's literally like a, a warning device, telling you.
If everybody sees that, then.
Yeah, oh wow, so I guess.
Then it'll break down the gym, tear the floor up, right?
Yeah.
And that's like, yeah, right, it's, it's under the gym floor.
So, let's, yes, the, the system number four is under the gym floor, so, let's talk about that. So let's talk about maintenance, because that was one of the other questions, how do you maintain something like this? So, we have, uh, inspection ports at the entrance, you know, there's one here, there's one here, and they, they, these little black dots. There's one here, there's one here, there's another one here, there's another one here, and then there's another one at the exit that goes out to, the system was out here. Um, those are, are gonna have manholes on them, so, uh, Chris about this extensively. I'm very comfortable with, you know, inspecting those on a very regular basis. And talking about, you know, in the beginning, very frequently, when we see that everything's working fine, you know, we might go to a less frequent, uh, duration. You know, you guys are free to, you know, do whatever you wanna do in terms of positions there.
Oh, we will be keeping it active.
Yeah, 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 no.
But how do you get to the inspection areas, aren't they below the gym floor?
So, the gym floor one is on the edge of the gym floor, and there's a section of the floor that just comes up and exposes the manhole. All the other ones are outside and.
There's probably one that's on the foundation. And, and then, if you had to get in there and fix something, you go back to the process?
This, this one here or the building?
No, if you had to get in there and fix something, it's likely the, the problem with the infiltration crushed stone or whatever it is at the bottom, right, the gravel at the bottom.
So, what is it that you're fixing?
Right, so that's what's slightly backed up, right?
What is it that you're fixing?
Well, if, if it's overflowing, then it's not functioning the way it's supposed to.
Right.
Right, which could mean that you've gotten a lot of lead or material that started to silt out and make that thing not function as, as an infiltration base, which is what it's supposed to be, right?
Right, so, again, this is all water that's coming just from the roof of the building, it's not coming from the landscape.
Yeah, roofs have leaves and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, and there's baskets on the drains that prevent that stuff from going down, and.
Yeah, that's fair, and I get it, I, I mean, I see plenty of. There, I get it. I I mean, I see plenty of roofs that, you know,
Yeah, okay.
Didn't function the way they were supposed to. So all I'm saying is if you have to get in there to repair,
Yeah.
then you have to get in there, right? Somebody has to get in there, clean it out, put new material, take old material out, put new material in.
So.
How else would you maintain?
So part of the maintenance, if we look in the ports and we do see that there's some kind of you know, sediment getting in there, is we have a plan, we've been talking about this just before, uh you know, the two ideas are a back truck. Um we've done research on that, we've called manufacturers, I don't know personally.
I talked to uh our veteran residents, they could get in there. They can bring up the three hundred feet hose. If they had to get in and suck it out, they have a water spraying system as well to break things up and then they suck it out.
And you have to be inside there to do that.
Do it from the port?
Yeah, they could do, they could.
We need a confined space, right? You just gotta set that up.
Yeah, I mean, as much as they can get to the port, you can get in there.
So this was super helpful with the the examples of where you got this installed already.
Yeah.
Um it looks like Mr. Uh Ventreska provided this.
Yes.
Out of these twenty units here, was there anything, I think what Steve is talking about, was there any examples of when this similar system failed that it was under the ground, it was, you know, in the residential building, et cetera, that you could either provide or you're like, look, there's, we haven't had any issues with this.
That that's what that is, that the list of all the.
So this is a building project where they are functioning and these are the ones that I mentioned have done and they're all, you know, they're I have a slide up, there's this all.
Okay.
Yeah, so there haven't been any problems with that yet so far.
That's what we're asking for. There's one that didn't work.
Yeah. Steve, I don't know, are there any other you, I mean, are there any others that you found that weren't working? I mean.
No, I'll be honest, we haven't. Uh I asked three other project managers and they've all said, based on this list, um that all of them are functioning as designed. Um they haven't, believe me, we would have gotten a phone call if there was a problem.
I'm always the slowest person. I always get sent.
You might not necessarily.
Bye, bye.
If they had emergency overflow, people just let them. Either let it overflow or have to go through great big rigmaroles. Try to clean it out, right?
Yeah, I should, if I could just also point out, we had uh talked about putting in addition to the the roof drains at the top or on the roof itself of uh putting a screen around those inlets um on the roof. And then we also have water quality uh units before they go into these systems to help capture more of the sediment, uh deep sump manholes, et cetera. So knowing that, yes, there is a possibility of leaves and and other debris coming from the roof, we're providing additional measures before we get to the infiltration system to help with taking out some of this debris that will get it, you know, eventually could get down into these areas.
Right, so that's a structure that's in the north courtyard, so that's also accessible. We have pairs of doors that are lined up one right in front of the other, so you can get a back truck hose right straight in through uh the outside of the building and uh clean that out if you need to.
Yeah, we don't do that. Hire that out.
Oh, yeah, we don't, we don't yet. To to vacuum it out, we would yet. But we do the general mix. We'll open them up regularly. I think we're stopped monthly in the beginning and see how that goes. If we don't see anything, then it'll be quarterly and we'll gauge it as we go to what it needs, you know.
I don't want to condition.
Don't worry, we'll let it go. We'll let it go.
Exactly what.
Okay, whatever you guys want to do.
Exactly what Mitch wrote in the in their write-up. We're gonna condition the first year monthly.
Yeah.
And then thereafter quarterly.
Yeah.
And we're not going away from quarterly. We're also gonna say that it has to be by a trained PE.
Okay.
And and that the inspection reports have to be signed and stamped, signed by the PE, the direct the school facilities, the principal and the superintendent.
Alright.
Because.
We don't want this to water.
We don't want anything to happen.
Yeah.
Um so far.
We want it to be an infiltration. At the end of the day, right? And it would be very easy to see it overflowing, that's just ignore. Then I, you know, no disrespect to anybody here, but you know, okay, we gotta, you know, hire a vacuum truck for three days and, you know, find space and we're at thirty, forty thousand dollars. And I know how this counting.
I don't know, I don't mind.
Exactly.
Yeah. And so the O and M plan needs to be revised to make sure that the infiltration is handled how it's supposed to be. Right now, I think it says twice yearly. I don't think so. So please coordinate that.
Sure, we can update that. And then I I would ask if the condition could read that the the school facilities would hire their PE to do the uh inspection. I mean, honestly, I I don't know if that's the most efficient way to do it, but of course, the board can do it how they how they want to do it. Um but I would just recommend ask that that be provided in the condition.
I, how they get a PE is up to them, I think, right?
We just.
I think what we're trying to do is to say, somebody's looked at it, the professionals looked at it and that the school administration has signed off that they've seen the report.
Right. Whoever hires the PE hires, we we don't care who hires it, but you know.
Yeah, I I guess I'm saying people that are that do the the cleaning and the inspections of these systems are are more qualified and there may not necessarily be a PE. They have more experience.
We're asking for a PE, but we we're asking for a PE. To PE trained in the system set and the stormwater system.
Yeah, that that typically comes from the manufacturer. They don't always have PEs on staff. That's that's the trick and that's the the difficulty of that uh condition. I don't want to put the school and the town in a in a position where they can't meet that condition. I think there's a way to do it so that um manufacturer or someone that's trained with it, not necessarily a PE trained with the systems, could provide that report and sign off by the manufacturer and the school facilities department.
Do they get trained and certified by the manufacturer?
There are some that do that, yes, that they provide that. Um the system that we're looking at here, they have a course that they told me that they do. I'm trying to get more information. They do it in Rhode Island. Um but I haven't been able to track it down and get specifics from them. But to me, that sounds ideal. You could get uh training at this plate at this uh.
Yeah, I think I think the objective is to have, you know, a trained professional look at it, right? So if if there's a way to say this is a trained profession, but certified by the manufacturer, that I would I would be okay with that.
I'll say PE or approved equivalent trained in the stormwater system is certified.
By the name.
Certified by.
I agree with that.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
We just don't want this to be bad and want us. Are are you done with the stormwater here? Because our engineer is online and I know she would like to say a few words.
Yeah, um I think the last slide, yeah, the last slide we had was the the list of the functioning systems under buildings. So, yes, if.
Janet, do you want to say anything on the um stormwater?
Um just for the record, um this is Janet Bernardo, professional sibling, she has the Horsey Witten Group, and we did provide um two letters to the board. As far as the stormwater, the the applicants and their engineer have responded adequately to all of our concerns. We did have up to suggested uh conditions. But as far as the system under the building, um you know, it's it's, as I said before, it's not um what I would like to see under under of the building, but I do believe that their calculations prove that it will function as they are proposing. I felt a lot better when I received the diagram that showed the red and the blue and the direction of where the overflows were going to and that they are coming out of grates that are very visible. So if all of a sudden water is coming out of those two sits on either side of the building and and they're also going to two different sides, so they're kind of ending up in two different areas. Um that made me feel a lot better for the whole design. So um and and they they were very thorough in their having their impermeable barrier involved included and having their geotech, their structural engineer, their architect, town. There's a lot of uh experts that were a part of that stormwater design, so um uh again, I'm still um not particularly crazy about having a structure under a building as as you all have already stated for various reasons, including how to tear it if it fails. But um I tell you, they have a they have a pretty good design and it is a very much a constrained site, so I don't have any more comments beyond that.
So, uh is is the planning board acceptable to this um with our peer review recommendations?
Yeah, with with the discussion set.
Right.
Yeah.
And I was also thinking of attaching the overflow document to the um to the final decision too and have that recorded with the final decision, so somebody knows where overflow is supposed to go and where we will.
Then, yes, thank you.
Okay, so the board is okay with uh with the drainage. Um we're still waiting for the DPW to provide an answer on um tying into the gravity drainage. They um they're still reviewing that. And we'll be conditioning that prior to um endorsement.
Yeah, just in a nutshell, that that memo showed that the, as as one might expect when you're uh complying with the stormwater regs, you're actually improving the conditions of water going into the storm sewer in the street from what is now.
Well, so, right, but DPW is still reviewing.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Are anybody, is everybody okay with stormwater now? Okay, good.
No, um I don't have any slides uh addressing anything from yeah, I guess that was DPW also. Yeah, so yeah, really, I I think that the the last thing is with the the DPW memo is clearing up how they're feeling about tying into the street. All of the other suggestions will be taken on and incorporated into the. Okay, alright. Moving on, um last last block here uh is really the interim erosion control plan. So last time you all made it clear that we didn't have a lot of detail around, you know, what's gonna be happening on the site during construction. So uh I think last time I showed you all the the phasing plans and there's, you know, seven different phases really here. Um but thi- this is really broke, the the phases are really broken into the building construction and all of those construction phases, one and two point one to two point four, those all really happen in this footprint here. So this uh erosion and sedimentation plan covers that at first set of phases, that first footprint. And so what we've got, um and I was listening to you guys talking about the um uh sewage treatment plant project, uh there's some similar ideas there that are that we are proposing here. So we have an open uh gravel swale, that's the heavy blue line here that goes all the way uh kind of protecting both the wetland and the property edge uh and drains into a stilling pond. This is basically probably the rough grading for what is going to become the uh in infiltration basin. So we have a couple of large uh stilling ponds here uh connected by culvert, stilling basins, I should say. Um and Steve, is the idea here that these are actually infiltrating?
Uh they'll they'll infiltrate a little bit. Um it'll be very slow, so those are actually, like you said, they're rough graded, so they're a little bit higher than what the finished grade would be to help prevent when any sediment gets in there, that'll be scooped out as they finish the basin.
Right.
Which will be helpful. So there will be some, yes, infiltration that's happening here. Um but a lot of the work will be happening with the um the gravel line swale that basically runs the length of the of the limit of work, which is that green, blue-green.
I think the swale is that.
That's um oh, I think you chopped it off, uh Tom. It's a.
Yeah, sorry. It's on the drawing, it's just off the side.
Uh I think it's two feet. I think it's at least two feet wide at the top.
I was gonna say. Yeah.
Two feet wide at the top and a foot at the bottom. Uh and then just lined with gravel. So and it's all sloped towards this basin and then once it gets to the um, before it gets to the basin, there's a frac tank with a little sump right there.
So there's a sump here, I actually forgot to highlight this one.
Yeah. We'll pump the water into the frac tank and then send it back into the stilling basin um before that eventually discharges through uh the existing connection that's there today. We'll catch basin down at Anvil. Um we also have another, yeah, sorry, there's another swale up here. This is same type of system, but this one is um completely filled with gravel, again, a two foot wide by one foot at the bottom. It has a four inch perforated pipe um to help convey the water, but it will allow the contractors to drive over it um and uh not be disrupted by by the stormwater uh control during construction. And we're and same thing.
Is that designed to handle a hundred year storm?
That's designed to handle, uh I did the calc, it's up to a twenty-five year storm. Um I can take a look at the hundred year storm, but I I only looked at the twenty-five. And it handles the twenty-five.
But can I just make a statement that you really need to evaluate these swales to really see if they're gonna work? Because at the beginning of our meeting, we were talking about the water treatment plant. The swales were there, they were designed, and they never worked. So that's just a caution so that you can, you know, make sure the water gets to really where it's supposed to be. Um and that they in functions for the same as well.
Understood. Yeah, the the based on the on the the way the the site is graded, everything obviously is coming down towards Anvil. There is a you know, area where it where the new building is going, it'll it'll pitch away towards that property line. Um we can indicate to the contractor that that they need to pitch the water towards the swale. I uh I understand your concern. We, so I used this on another school project. It worked very well, it's very similar where the new building close to the existing building. Um and it worked out well.
So what's the what's the frac tank for?
Frac tank is to help take out some more sediments. So as the water probably gets sediment-lated, given the the amount of exposed land that's there, when you pump that water into the frac tank, it's basically a large tank with baffles in it and it'll still the water and drop the sediment out. So at the other end, it's clear. Um and then that can be, you know.
So you're pumping into the frac tank, then it's not a gravity flow thing?
Correct, correct.
So this will be above grade, so there's somewhere there's a pump pit or something?
That's what this thing is here.
Yeah, that's what that is right there.
Some pit right there. Oh, I, yeah, see my my arrow there, it's like a very I'll just point to it here. It was like a shipping container.
Yeah, yeah, so there's there's a a stilling basin here with a frac tank. Yeah, so the water flows, you know, gets gets caught at the edge, goes uh to the stilling basin and then from there gets pumped into the frac tank.
What about on the?
And then on this side here, I forgot to uh highlight it here, there's another uh stilling basin here, which, you know, water is is being caught there, uh sediments are settling out and then water is pumped into the frac tank here.
And the frac tanks are gonna be sized to handle your disturbance that's required for NIMTS? For your SWAP?
Yeah, we've we specified eight to ten thousand gallon frac tanks as the smaller ones and then the bigger one, I think is, I think it's eighteen is the next side, eighteen to twenty.
And you're gonna prove that 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 will handle the disturbed area for the SWAP?
Um I don't know, uh we'll have to talk to the contractor about that. I don't know if I can prove that because I don't know I I don't know if I can prove that just yet. I understand where you're coming from though.
I mean, because we're gonna wanna see that. Okay.
And then um What happens if the pumps stop working?
So, there's an overflow, so in those basins, there's a an area drain that's set about one to two feet above the bottom of those stilling basins. If there's a intense flow or the pumps shut off, the water can go into that. And then out uh between the buildings, there's a pipe there, and then on the other side, there's a um. There, uh, it goes to the stilling basin. Down towards Anvino Road, and then the the other, so when it does overflow and come between the buildings. Um, that does connect into, I think it connects to that to the stilling basin, I'm just having a hard time seeing the connection. Oh, maybe not, no, it it goes right into the um. You know, it goes into the existing drainage system that's there.
So, I guess the question is, if it if they fail, we're not gonna have water spilling over the boundaries into the wetlands and into debris properties?
That's correct.
Moves our power a lot here.
I'm sorry?
We lose our power a lot here.
Yeah.
So. If we have a major storm, we would lose our power, what happens to the water?
Uh, is if you're relying on pumping it, then the pumps don't really run.
A generator.
Quarter of a generator, yeah.
Yeah.
Generator.
Yeah.
Well, you don't want a generator sitting there, keeping next door to a lot.
No, so we will condition that those always have to be kept in good working order, so that the sound is minimized. Um, because we have seen it on other budgets where the sound got to be quite unbearable.
We live in generating heaven.
So, the next slide uh is really showing kind of the the B side, B condition, if you will, uh, which covers phases three point one to three point three. Which is really the demolition of the existing school and then all the site work that ensues after that to put in the parking lot. Um, I think the parking will go in first, there's there's a couple of sub-phases here that would happen the first summer, which are really uh putting in the stormwater. Um, uh, structure underneath this parking area here, that would actually go in first. Um, and then the the temporary circulation for the existing school happens, um, you know, gets put back. But generally speaking, what we're talking about is the bounding of the area on this side of the school here. And each of those sub-phases will have a, you know, slightly different um perimeter. And some of the perimeters might only be a few weeks, right, and then they're going to uh reconfigure the site. But the documents will be written and the SWAP will be written that obviously every time they change the perimeter. They have to update and reinstall all of the erosion control and sedimentation control.
Is the new school operational?
Uh, at at this point, the new school is operational, um, if you want, I do have the the specific phase diagrams, if you wanna look at that in detail again.
I think this is a good enough, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, whatever phase you're in, you've gotta make sure you're not spilling water or.
Of course.
Not supposed to be.
Right.
Particularly unless the new school's operational.
Right, that's precisely, we were talking about that exact thing, that's why we have the swale here, because there will be points in time where we'll have, you know, uh. The the grade will be graded and it is going down toward the school, so we basically have a big, uh, you know, catcher there to take care of the stormwater.
So, is that the frac tank on the bottom?
The frac tank is.
Yes, it's right there.
Yeah, rated right there.
How long will it take to take this uh spill down?
The actual demolition, um, a couple of weeks, there's there's abatement that happens, and then there's the actual demolition. Probably three, three weeks, three full weeks, it it's different in different schedules.
And when is all of them, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, well, so. The um.
The transfer station.
Well, no, 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 the the, it does get separated into different piles, I don't know, Steve, maybe you can talk about this a little bit, you have a whole.
Yeah, there's actually extraordinary requirements for recycling, so all of it is completely separated, it's it's really amazing how the industry has changed. Since the time of pandemic, where that really didn't used to be a consideration at all, and now it's unbelievable, all the different piles of stacks and tracking it and. And showing and and proving that all of that was recycled and separated, we separated and recycled, so. I would say the 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 abatement is three weeks anyways, and then the demo is at least three weeks, where you go to pull foundations, uh, then there's a big deal.
Is there any crushing or that kind of thing happening, like when you're.
Typically not.
You have to separate rebars or concrete and that kind of stuff, or?
Yeah, typically not, um, I was thinking of foundations, boulding, they they do something with those, but maybe not, typically not. Um, it it's actually a a a quite a careful operation, you know, you don't just have this big massive wrecking ball coming and smashing everything to smithereens. You know, it's actually very careful clawing and and dipping and then, you know, sorting and such, yeah.
But there's no crushing on site or no hammering?
Oh, well, hammering is all different, there's there's rock and such, yeah.
No, I mean of the debris, not breaking the debris down.
Well, yes, with the foundation, they'll definitely use a hammer on the back though to to participate in the demolition, absolutely.
No, I'm saying after that, once you have piles, are you reducing piles? Is that what I wish?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna condition no concrete crushing and no rock crushing operations, I mean, that's that's the line. I mean, but obviously you have to use a hammer, you know, tech attachment to break it up into a piece that you can transport it.
Yeah, and if it's ledge, we have to break that up, that's a different thing from demo, but definitely use a hammer on ledge.
Right, right, I mean, we're gonna generally condition no concrete and no crushing of stone.
Why would you be working ledge?
Stay ledge there.
Concerned with where where the building's going, we didn't, we hardly found any, we find any?
No, I'm talking about the demolition, I'm talking about.
I was speaking of all because of 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 hammering on rock, crushes, I was just making sure it's all clear what what is happening.
Oh, okay, yeah, I I was just talking about. Yeah, we don't wanna take any ledge out in the existing.
Yeah, we didn't encounter any, we do not think that we encountered any ledge, there was one boring that went to. Fairly shallow refusal, but that could easily have been a boulder, there's lots of boulders.
There'll be lots of boulders.
Yeah, there there already is a lot of them, that woods is actually full of them.
There will be lots of them like Chris.
Yeah.
Alright, so two construction questions, what we touched upon last time was contractor parking. Is there gonna be enough room on this site for contractor parking, because you can't park on Anvino Road or the surrounding roads?
Right, so, what we have shown here, I think, is, I counted this before, it's twenty-eight. Thirty-eight, it's almost forty spaces are the 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 blue rectangles here, this is. An example of what how the site could possibly be set up. Um, could the contractor, if they needed more parking, could they create more parking, of course they could. Um, this is not a definitive, like, we have no way of really controlling, you know, exactly how many. And where the cars are going to be parked, so, uh, that's really up to the contractor.
No, I understand that, but you you won't be conditioned that you will not be parking, they will not be parking on the roads at all.
Right, understand, and I think we did mention this last time, the OPM is looking into alternative parking arrangements, and that's in the last project.
It off-site parking or us, no parking on the streets, nor is it.
No, it's pretty clear, the, you know, the 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 side streets here are two lanes and nothing else.
That's right, yeah. Alright, so the next question becomes, I think we're gonna have to condition, have you thought about a truck route? Um, because it. You're gonna have some pretty big trucks coming through here, you're gonna be having a lot of trucks coming with film, and um, I don't think that it's appropriate route to be using. Captain Pierce and um coming in from Anhox, coming into Anvino that way. I mean, I think we're gonna have to condition that you go Anvino to haul it to countryway.
I would, I would say that makes the most sense, use the largest, more arterial type.
Right, but I mean, we have problems with truckers, um, just following the GPS. Not not following necessarily the truck routes that are on the project.
Yeah, that'll happen.
And 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 you know what, we have a guy who lives on a truck team in town, um, for the place, and you know, they'll get stopped. And um, so, we're just saying, we're gonna condition a truck route.
Sure.
And that's the truckers, the truckers need to follow it. There's no way that you'd be able to make that trip, you don't need one.
We have run into this exact same circumstance, the recent project that mentioned, the folks that are on the truck route say, why, why do we, why are you on here? Just just to say that.
We get that.
Yeah, I'm sure I'm sure you agree with that, that's the thing.
You got it. Better run, be late, to hit the off. Gotta come in there somehow.
Yeah, that's, that at the end of the day, that is, gotta convince someone.
It'd be better to do on bigger roads.
A lot of.
This is a school in a neighborhood, I don't know if they have to do this.
A lot of them have used, um. Manlot, and then they've gone out to clap, and then through Oldwell Grove in that way, and that really should not happen. Because those roads are terribly narrow.
Manlot has truck um restriction on it anyways.
That which no one, nobody pays any attention to it, there's one on on Booth Hill, and nobody cares.
Well, I mean, I I can write that in the condition that they can't use those roads at all, I mean.
Is it a, is it a weight issue?
Yeah, it's a weight issue, yeah, it's a weight issue.
Such a, some ask. I I mean, I qualify to to be limited in the group for talks about a certain weight, but the roads have weight issues.
I mean, several of them. Manlot and Booth Hill are specific, um, are two roads that cannot be used at all for trucks.
So, that's what I'm saying, so you you define what the truck is, that's what I'm asking very long, that's what I mean. Um, is it above a certain weight, because you know, most of the work is for whatever.
That's different.
Oh, but that's that's different.
That's what I'm asking.
We're we're talking, we're talking construction, construction. We we conditioned it on whole runners and we had people breaking it all the time. And, you know.
It's really difficult, I assure you, it's extremely difficult.
I know, but.
Every contract will have it in it, every single one will have that written in it, and it'll happen a lot.
Well, let's hope it doesn't happen on this job.
Yeah.
Question, we're gonna condition and hauls the way to come in?
Yes.
What happens, how how can you say just haul it, if DPW uses Captain Pierce all the time? With DPW.
They've got a much bigger trucks than DPW.
You're gonna have some potential big trucks coming in here.
I'm just saying DPW does too.
I think the, yeah, so you go up Captain Pierce and then making the left turn to Anvino, it's gonna be pretty difficult.
It's tight, it's very tight. Coming up at your bylaws, the site will.
I'm just wondering how DPW does it every day.
They don't, all those pickup trucks, you know, those you, trucks that I imagine you go to Lucy, go Captain Phil. They have big dump trucks, they keep. What they do with them is run down, um, Captain Pierce to countryway. That's it. So, that's, they are going that all the way, like, like that.
Well, they must get some time.
Yeah.
Well, I think maybe they do, but it's it maybe, we're talking about more about the repetition of, like, very rich dump trucks. Great. Like five a day for a month or something, both ways, like the repetition.
For the hauling of material being brought in and the demolition, that's the easiest ones, it just tends to be one group and it's just decisions, it's a lot, several trips during the day. That's what was is most of it and the easiest to control, because it's a regular group, is the is for one-offs that are just really.
It's the guy that came from down from Quebec with the steel, it's it's supposed to English, all that.
Well, and that, you know, you have to control that, because you, we're not allowing idle, can idle, they can't get here early and idle on the roads.
Yeah.
And all that kind of stuff, that that that's not allowed at all.
Now, these are all conditions that we normally talk about, whatever you see at the beginning of the job.
Right, and so. It'd be, um, on Curtis Estates, we also conditioned no hauling during school. When the times when the kids go to school, because there's a lot of walkers who go to this school. And we conditioned that that had to be coordinated every year through the planning and school department. So, that'll be a condition that'll be in here too, um, and, you know. I would imagine it's gonna be broken, because people like to haul when they when they like to haul, but, you know, it's for the safety of the kids. Morning, morning.
That one's easier, because we get sent away, if we show up and they're not allowed on site, so that one's easier. And obviously, we're extremely close to the schools and many working, we're closer to the schools, so that kind of topic, easier to to correct. Because they're just not allowed on site, at at all, basic rules, not allowed to send away, that's how like it's in, it's that random one that doesn't fall apart for this very long.
Right, but I mean, gates won't, gates won't be allowed to be open till seven o'clock, I mean, we conditioned seven o'clock as our um start time.
Well, that's two different things, start time and gates open are two different things, because if we wanna have a truck, we wanna get them into the site and off the road and shut off. But we wanna let them on site, can't not let them on site, we can't let the workers, can't stop the workers from knowing the site.
The workers can go on site, but you're not, no, no starting the machinery.
That's, no issue at all.
On my last project, similar thing, school in a neighborhood, um, it was a construction manager, not a contractor, but similar idea. They actually set up an approved, a town-approved, basically a place where a truck will wait if they.
To be sent in.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, a place to send them to if they arrive inside one of the blackout hours, right? Because you just don't even want them anywhere near the site if it is blackout hour.
Right.
Cause that's when the kids are going to and from.
Right.
Yeah, so, I think we could do similar thing here.
I mean, some of this is just from experience we've had over the last few years with day construction projects.
I see that.
You know, and we we do get people who will call and say that that they were cleaning the toilets at six thirty-five today. And, you know, then, you know, we'll have to call you and say, you know. That happened, and it happens within a couple of times, you're gonna get hauled back into the planning board and get your hands slapped.
It's like you're just working in residential areas.
Sure.
That's it, it's schools, so all this is residential areas, so you don't.
Always, yeah.
It's not like you'll do in a C four.
We'll have the, as part of the owner's project management team, which I'm a part of, we'll have a person on site at all times whenever there's construction happening. That's sort of the requirement with the MSA projects, and and that person's, part of their responsibilities is to watch these things. And and to certainly be notified if there's any violation they didn't know about, but and then to to follow up on it, so very much in tune with all these things.
Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah, on the school side, I mean, I'll be there there as well, for sure.
My concern is, weekends, when nobody's there, or evenings, because it it's sort of a fun nuisance. Kids like to go and do things where they shouldn't, so this will be totally fenced.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Totally fenced, and some type of. Motion detectors, I don't know if you've got the cameras, but that won't be on all night, but if somebody reaches, boom, a light goes on. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, the the. The office trailers, I think sometimes they put a motion light on them. Um, and we typically actually require and expect that they have a camera. Um, and it's it's really for the purpose of recording the construction, but they also use it, you know, you can you can look back, yeah, for safety or that.
You don't have something 24/7?
Not on a site like that, no.
I don't know if they need to.
I mean, those are things that you can you can adjust, like, if if they set something up and it's a problem. Just, you know, let everybody know that, you know, let let these guys know that it's a problem, and we can work with the contractor to change it.
Don't worry, we'll get phone calls if there's a problem.
I bet.
I know.
So does anybody have any more questions? Do you have, do you have any more questions for Janet? I mean, um, I think her part of the pair of you was pretty thorough. And, you know, she, her concerns have all been addressed. We just have a few things on the traffic to address. And and any other concerns, because I anticipate a decision for the next meeting.
Will there be any type of rendering of the inside of the building? You know, the classrooms set up?
Yeah, I mean, I think those might already be posted on the website or anything for you guys.
We got a lot of.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Can't wait. Alright, so if you're done.
I think it's my typical college, just don't think of spelling, because this is a school. Oh, yeah.
Ask Len and Ren about this.
Can everybody go by? It looks to me, it looks to me as though it's the team that's on the. Are we ready? I'm moved to accept the Apple's request to continue the public hearing of site plan administrative review. And stormwater current for the McAllen Elementary School until April twenty-four, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty P M. And to continue the time of action following town plan until eight thirty twenty twenty-five. Second.
On the favor.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise.
Good night.
Thanks, thanks everybody online. Appreciate you all being here.
I can try, I'll try to.
What other um schools, uh, what other county?
Gosh, we have a very long list. I mean, the the two that I have personally done are Greenfield High School and Northridge Elementary.
Oh, I worked at school in West Brom.
Oh, yeah.
Bales.
Yes, I read that.
Oh, geez. You know, you're familiar. I worked at Bales during that.
I'm afraid that it was just time.
I was a teacher.
Yeah.
And yeah.
I worked in that from beginning to end.
Alright, thanks, Mary.
I mean, it's, I'm on this one, that's what.
We had all the same limitations on kids and the gates.
So I, that's what I was thinking in the grading.
Yes, grading was incredibly challenging.
It was, it was crazy in the way the school, so we moved to the new school and watched. And watched that school, like the kids would stand, just sit down, the old ones.
We recruited a few of those kids. They're interns.
And they could be through the halls and the hatch. It's, I mean, you guys have.
That was awesome. That was challenging because the existing building here, the whole site was on a slope. And so the new building was up here.
Yes, so you would be walking the kids, because they're around the school, it's like a walk around the building and. Building's secure, the walkway's secure, and then new schools, like literally right there.
Try and not.
But it it worked.
The challenge again, it worked.
Yeah, I mean, Marion's standard.
Absolutely.
Yes, she is a delighted.
Is there a motion?
One of the. Still pushing.
You also want to give your second.
Hi, hi.
Good night, thank you, Andrew.